Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October fifteenth Committee of the Hole Meeting. Reeve Hall, Councillor Chamzick and Councillor Capitania call send their regrets they're unable to join us in person today. Due to other appointments and scheduling conflicts, so we will call the meeting to order at nine thirty one. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples connected to these lands, their history, language and culture. First item on our agenda this morning is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, can we get a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Minns. Sorry, Councillor Holland, you were just a tad slow. Well, called question, all in favor? Motion carried, five to one, five to nothing. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our September seventeenth Committee of the Hole Meeting. I did note one minor correction for Resolution twenty four one fifty. It currently reads motion to carried. Got that? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that during the agenda review. Were there any other amendments required to the minutes? Seeing none, can we get a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Councillor Wallack. All the question, all in favor? Motion carried, five now. Next item on the agenda is the CAO update. This is on page eight of your agenda package. Did anybody have any questions for the CAO pertaining to this update? Ree- Councillor Minns? No? Okay. Wonderful, can we get a motion to accept the CAO update, receive it as information? Councillor Holland? All the question, all in favor? Motion carried, five now. Next item is the department updates on page nine of your agenda package. We will begin with the Director of Community and Protective Services update. Were there any questions for the Director? I did have one pertaining to the Casland Fire Hall. Somebody contacted me over the weekend saying that it had been broken into again last week. How many times has that building been broken into in the last year?
Um, I believe it's three.
Right.
But we are, you know, working on solutions and the alarm did go off and we felt that that it spooked the perps and didn't find that there was much missing other than the damage that was done to the door, so. It's a work in progress, I guess.
Is this a common issue with our fire halls? Or is it just that Casland is kind of-
Probably not productive for us to publicly talk about our security issues at any spaces, so we'd be happy to discuss more in closed session.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councillor Wallack.
I just wanted to commend the the team for the economic development, or sort of the tourism website. Looks much better than the old one, so good job.
Any further questions for the Director?
I just got one on on page thirteen. Does our CPOs hand out like, I guess, what it sounds is good tickets, like like somebody's doing something good, do they do they wander around and end up kind of like a I don't know, I I call them good tickets where they they actually come forward and say, hey, great job and whatever you're doing, or especially to young kids or something like that, right?
Certainly, they have discussions and and do that with kids and I know, you know, one of our CPOs was out at Grassland at an event last week, so they're doing lots of education and.
Okay.
Any further questions for the Director? Seeing none, let's move on to the Corporate Services Department update on page nineteen of your agenda package. Are there any questions for the Director of Corporate Services? Councillor Minns?
I guess the one question I have is is with this Dayforce training and page nineteen, I guess it would be on Dayforce system and that, is there a like like for cyber attack and then I know it's getting worse and worse and and municipal end and and all all areas for cyber attacks and that is and and this is we're doing more on the web, aren't we, with this, so is there is there processes in place to to stop this, or?
Thank you, Councillor Minns, for the question. I'll have to check with our right our payroll coordinator, but I do believe with Dayforce there are some security measures that are in place. But I will confirm that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions regarding Corporate Services update? Seeing none? Let's move on to the Infrastructure Services Department update on page twenty four of your agenda package. Councillor Minns?
Pump in here. Just a couple, um. Let's go to page twenty seven wastewater. The damage that happened to the outfall line, which lagoon was that on?
Through the Chair to Councillor Minns, that was the Grassland.
That was a grassland out like farther down the ditch line?
Yes, it had been driven over by heavy agricultural equipment.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, okay, and then I guess it's page twenty eight talking about phones and that, have the phones been repaired at at Public Works, or is there still only one phone working there?
Through the Chair to Councillor Minns, they all have their own phone lines.
Everybody's back up and running?
Can receive and make phone calls.
Okay, perfect. What was, oh, Bridge File out in Division eight. Can't remember the Bridge File number, but they're changing that out by Randy Babiaks. Has that road been closed down yet?
My apologies through the Chair to Councillor Minns, I will have to get back to you on that as I don't have the Bridge File number list in front of me, so. Perhaps after the meeting you could show me on the map, I'll get the number and we'll be able to provide an update to all of Council.
Okay, perfect. It's that Range Road two thirty five going north of the Hutter Heights.
Okay.
That would be about enough.
Sounds like Gurlak. I can.
Yeah, in regards to the snowplowing, and they said there's inspections that are going to happen. Who does the inspections? Do the greater operators in the area do the inspection of those?
Through the Chair to Councillor Gurlak, those will be done by either the Public Works Manager or Public Works Foreman.
Thank you. Any further questions regarding the Infrastructure Department update? Seeing none, can we get a motion to accept the department updates as information? Councillor Wallack? Called question, all in favor? Post? Motion's carried, four to one. Next item on our agenda is the Councillor Updates. Let's start with Councillor Gurlak today. Can you use your microphone, please? Thank you.
Yes, I I did attend a local meeting with with the fire departments and I thought it was a very productive meeting that probably resolved a lot of issues or certainly shows the potential to result well resolve a lot of issues and it was very informative and I think it was a necessary thing and I think it was I think it was well done. For starters. Secondly, the Ag Society has completed its uncompensated mowing program of the county property within the hamlet for another year. So that's done and that's not a whole heck of a lot more.
Thank you. Councillor Minns?
Yeah, had a had a great month, I think since the last committee of the whole meeting had went on an Alice tour down around Laduke and 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 Watasquaw counties and just a one day event and looked at different projects through Alice and that. It was a great tour. It's it's nice to get out and look at different different farmland and and different land altogether, I thought. At one point, I thought we were going to hit the mountains at any point in time because we seemed to drive so far, but I was still in Watasquaw County. I made sure, where are we? But no, it was a it was a great get together there and then had a couple of couple of good meetings, one Water Commission meeting, one one Waste Committee meeting and and yeah, that's that's about it, other than had a great Thanksgiving and some great news happened on Thanksgiving Day there. Me and my wife are going to be grandparents again.
Ah, congratulations.
So, so that was some great news, so we thought we were done, but we're heading on number five. So, yeah, no, that's that's my month in a in a quick review.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome, awesome news. Thanks very much. It was a busy month as well. I I took the time to do a complete Division five tour. And just in response mainly to a lot of resident phone calls that I've been receiving. So I took the time to check all of that out and engaged in quite a few community events. The Truth and Reconciliation Day Walk was well attended and and it was a beautiful day to walk through the trails, it was gorgeous. The Run for Life event, exactly the same, it was gorgeous in the trails this fall, so that was amazing as well and and well attended and and congratulations to all those who who put those successful events together. And again, as I mentioned, took quite a few resident calls this month. And I would imagine it's, you know, in preparation for winter and all of those things that everybody's having a good look at things, so. Other than that, it's it's just been super busy working with committee work and enjoying it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Wallack.
So the Doctors Committee wrapped up their student tour this end of September. They had a barbecue for them before they left and the feedback we got from them was awesome. They really enjoyed everything in the area. Spent a lot of time in the county. Out on the lakes and trails and quadding and all the things, so they had a great time. So that's good, as the better the reputation we have in the medical student field, the better for the future. We attended the Alberta Hub meeting, so I passed out two maps. So the one with the red, the commodities flow, it says twenty twenty two, but it's actually from twenty sixteen. So it's kind of old data, but it shows kind of where all the commodities are flowing in Alberta. So we have a lot through our our county. And then the other one is the economic corridors that the provincial government has identified. They also talked a lot about getting our name out there as as smaller communities and and telling people what we do for the like the good, the good that we do. Cold Lake, City of Cold Lake, they they put out around seven press releases a week. Just sometimes they catch national news, they caught national national news on their skunk trapping program. So they just said like the more the good that they can put out and what they're doing, the more people know. And same with Alberta Hub, just if there's an economic development possibility or something that good in economic developments to reference Alberta Hub as as their behind the scenes on a lot of things here, so. And attended the Pembina meeting and just a few road road complaints about washboard with the new gravel down, but other than that, it's been good.
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time in the last month focusing on multiplex strap planning. We've had one session with the consultant and we have another one coming up this Thursday and then a meeting next Monday, so. Trying to get the strap plan done as much as possible to incorporate it into the budget there. And the long term planning, especially when we look at the capital planning, we looked at our asset management plan, their beginnings of the asset management plan at the last multiplex meeting and it's extremely eye opening how much maintenance and repairs and whatnot is required of a building that age and that size and we want to make sure that it's available for the community for the long term, so. Just really working on making sure that some decisions are being made when they need to be made so that we can access as much grant funding as possible and make sure that our municipal partners are in the know. Also attended the Pembina Zone meeting. I just keep getting compliments on how great our presenters are at that Pembina Zone meeting and I'd like to thank Ms. Plurd for all of her help organizing those and making sure that those meetings run smoothly. And also was interviewed for the Health and Safety Corps audit. Wonderful to be included in that process, I guess. And then just agenda review and different items preparing for the Fall RMA Convention, which is coming up far too fast, far too fast. Thank you very much. Councillor Gurlak, you wanted to make a motion to accept the Councillor Updates as information? Thank you. We'll call the question, all in favor? opposed? Your post, okay, the motion carries four to one. Next item on our agenda is Policy fifty five ten Development Enforcement on page thirty of your agenda package. Councillor Holland, you asked for this policy to be sent to committee for discussion?
I did, and I would love to have had all of my notes, unfortunately. I forgot them. So they're sitting it on my desk and I apologize and wondering if it would be okay with Council unless anyone else has anything to add to table this to the next meeting.
Were there any portions that you thought administration would have to come back for with more data for the next time, or?
It's more of a combination of instead of just development enforcement, it would be bylaw enforcement, so it would be a combination of of bringing those two policies together. And then just updating some of the language as well as adopting maybe possibly some of the other suggestions from different policies that the province has or municipalities across the province has. So again, that's quite extensive in the notes and and I can forward those if that's helpful, if if and I apologize, it's I was.
So you're making a motion to table this to next committee of the whole meeting? Yep. There's no discussion on tableing motions? On the adoption of the motion to table this to the next committee of the whole meeting, all in favor? Post? Motion carried, three to two. It would now be in order to accept a motion to enter closed session? Councillor Gurlak?
I just bring up one point that I forgot to add to the agenda. Going past Colton Corner, I'm just wanting, what a mess. Like, is there anything that can be done to deal with? Like, the guy started demolishing that building, that's all, that scrap pile is piled up there and and in front of them motel units, it's just it's just awful. It does not look very good.
CAO, bye.
Yeah, we'd be happy to provide a report back to Council.
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Wallack, you made a motion to go into closed session at nine fifty? Called the question, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carried, six to no. Councillor Holland, you're not the only one, I forgot their notes, I forgot my whole laptops. Gurlak made a motion to come out of closed session at ten eleven AM. That motion carried, six and out. Then declared a brief recess for three minutes. And we will reconvene at ten fifteen. Are we good? Good. Coming out of closed session, related to item eight point one, Councillor Wallack made a motion to acknowledge the completion of Resolution CC twenty four three twenty nine and remove it from the action item list, correct?
Point of order? That motion would be invalid unless it's recommended to Council.
Councillor Wallack? I don't think it's completely inconsistent with what we've done, but would you like to recommend that to County Council? The adoption of the motion to recommend County Council to acknowledge the completion of Resolution CC twenty four three twenty nine and remove it from the action item list. Called the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? That motion fails on a tie. You voted opposed, did you not, Councillor Gurlak? You voted opposed? Yep. I've seen him raise his hand, Councillor Holland.
I just need to find that.
You were making a motion to refer this item to County Council?
Yes. I was just looking for the CC number, but.
I think that's in direct competition with the last motion that was defeated, so.
It would be to refer this item to County Council.
But that's what the motion we just voted on was and it goes defeated.
It was to have it removed from the list.
No, it was to recommend to County Council to acknowledge the completion and remove from the action item list.
Right, and this motion is to refer the item to County Council without doing any of those other actions. So without taking it off the list and without acknowledging that it is complete. So that would, for me, and I guess that would be a a CAO advice for that motion.
CAO, do you have any advice on that one? Sorry.
Madam Chair.
If the motion to recommend County Council failed, can you make another?
I understand, I understand.
Or are they in competition?
It could be, I mean, I guess the yeah, how do I? It's hard for me to discuss this because I I'm worried I might be violating closed session privacy.
Councillor Holland?
Okay, I guess it would be to recommend to County Council that CC two four, where is it again here? Two four three two nine remain on the action list for further discussion.
Councillor Wallack? So now we can recommend to committee that we do this? I'm confused.
That is a part of our procedural bylaw that motions are recommended to Council.
Reeve Hall, did you have your hand up?
Can you just repeat the motion? I don't think I understood what the request was.
Can you please repeat your motion, Councillor?
To recommend to County Council to forward CC, where is it again? Two four three two nine for further discussion.
Okay, that doesn't match what you said the first time. To forward the action item list to Council for further discussion?
CC two four, whatever it is here again, CC two four dash three two nine.
So to forward the action item list to County Council for further discussion regarding Resolution CC two two four three two nine? Any further discussion on that motion?
I'd like to amend that motion to include the words open session portion of County Council. So when the investigator, I mean, I think.
All right, so to amend the motion to clarify the discussion to take place in the open session part of the council meeting?
Yes.
Any discussion on the amendment for our called question? Reeve Hall's made a motion to amend the motion to clarify the discussion to take place in open session at the council meeting. Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, six and O. And the adoption of the now amended motion to forward the action item list to County Council for further discussion regarding Resolution CC twenty-four three twenty-nine in open session? We'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes four to two. Was there a motion to accept the update regarding item eight point two for information, Counselor Minns? Thank you. We'll call the question on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six and O. Oh, sorry, five to one. Meeting adjourned at ten twenty-two. Thank you very much, everyone.